Regular City of Sonoma Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, March 12th, 2020. And as those of you in the room can tell, it's not quite regular. But this is what we have to go through for the things that have been handed down to us from the state to maintain proper distance so that we try to prevent further spread of the virus as much as possible. So we'll live with the situation as we have it and try to get through this meeting with as normal as possible. First of all, there I will have a call to order. Wendy?
Thank you. Commissioner Barbos?
Here.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett?
Here.
Commissioner Larry Barnett?
Here.
Commissioner Bohar?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
And Commissioner Wellender?
Here.
How about Chair Felder?
And Chair Felder.
Here.
Chair Felder, sorry. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll have a pledge from Commissioner Wellender, please.
My pledge is to apply the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. A few housekeeping items. First of all, no new items will be heard by the planning commission after 10:00 PM unless the commission by majority vote specifically decides to continue reviewing items. And if an item is not heard due to the length of the meeting, we'll attempt to schedule a special meeting as soon as possible. And given the circumstances, we aren't quite sure what that would be. Any decisions that are reached by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 15 calendar days following the planning commission decision. If anyone has cell phones or whatever devices that make noise, please put them on silent mode so we don't disturb the meeting. And with that, the first item on the agenda is comments from the public. And at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It's recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the planning commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for commission consideration. So upon being acknowledged by the chair, please step to the podium, speak into the microphone, begin by stating and spelling your name. Is there any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move right along. The first, the next item is review and acceptance of the agenda. And we're going to make a couple of changes to the agenda if it's acceptable to the rest of the commission. We're going to move item 7.3 up to the first item to be heard under the public hearing because that item is going to be continued. Then we will continue on with item 7.2 and follow with 7.1.
Mr. Chair, if I can just ask?
Yes.
This is David over here. Could we also have me give a quick report on some things related to the arrangement of the room relative to meet future meetings and some actions coming up?
Would you like to do that right now?
Yeah, I'd like to do that before. But I think you have to approve the modification to the agenda to include that change.
Okay. So does anybody have any objections to changing the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move, we'll adopt the agenda as I stated.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Chair. Because of the actions of today and because of the way we're seated, the way that we are, we will be canceling the Design Review Historic Preservation Commission meeting on the 17th. But before that, the city council meeting on Monday will go ahead as scheduled, but it will be a pared-down version, meaning that the Verizon appeals will not be heard that evening. We have received communication from Verizon that they're willing to extend. We're currently working out when those dates will be. The point of this communication right now that I'm providing is that non-essential business will be the order of the day. So with today, for example, it was kind of short notice to turn around and cancel a meeting. We did scramble around noon to try to figure out if the math worked here for the chairs. And it looks like we have room for eight members of the public inside here and eight out there in the lobby. So this is really a test run to see how things may or may not work for Monday evening for the city council. That concludes my comments. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, David. With that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. And all items listed on the consent calendar considered to be routine will be acted upon in a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the planning commission, staff, or the public request specific items to be removed for separate action. And the two items that are on consent calendar for tonight are the application for the temporary use permit for Foley Family Wines to conduct their food truck Fridays and the minutes from February 13th. So does anyone care to pull any of the agenda? Yes?
I would like to pull item 7.1.
Okay. 6.1, you mean?
6.1.
All right. Anything else? I will then take a motion on the other item for the minutes.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Barbos?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett?
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Barnett?
Aye.
Commissioner Bohar?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Wellender?
Yes.
Chair Felder?
Yes. Okay, the motion carries unanimously. So the other item on consent then is the discussion, possible action to approve an application for the year-end review of the Foley Family Wines for a seasonal outdoor food truck event and a temporary use permit for the 2020 outdoor food truck event at the Sebastiani Winery at 389 Fourth Street East, including action to approve categorical exemption. So with that, do you have a staff report, Wendy?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chair Felder and members of the commission. I'm just pulling this up. And it helps if I plug it in. There we go. It should come up here. All right. By way of background, this event began in 2011, and the initial approval of the event was granted by the planning commission as a temporary use permit. The event takes place in conjunction with a Friday evening music series, which occurs indoors in the tasting room. Most recently in December of 2018, a post-event review of the 2018 event and a temporary use permit for the 2019 event was approved by the commission. The post-event review is a requirement of the temporary use permit. As approved under the temporary use permit, the trucks are parked within the main winery parking lot, along the rock wall that fronts on Fourth Street East, and/or directly in front of the tasting room. The event is supervised by an onsite Sebastiani employee, whose responsibilities include confirming that each food vendor has a valid City of Sonoma business license and ensuring that the business license is readily visible on each food truck. The food trucks must use existing electricity onsite rather than generators. And staff has determined that the applicant substantially complied with all the conditions of approval associated with the temporary use permit in the past. The 2020 series is going to be conducted similarly to the previous series, except it's going to expand from six to 11 events from May through September, and each food truck event will be limited to three food trucks. The trucks will park along the main winery parking lot, along the rock wall, and the applicant is proposing to have the food trucks open from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and no other outdoor activities are proposed. Alternatively, if the planning commission is not in favor of approving the expanded number of events from six to 11, the applicant has indicated to staff that they would accept those parameters. Individual events at the winery, such as food truck Friday events, are forwarded to the planning commission for review on a case-by-case basis. It's a staff's opinion that the findings for the temporary use permit can be made, and as staff has not received complaints related to the event in the past four years, staff requests that future food truck Friday events at the Sebastiani Winery be reviewed administratively and not be forwarded to the commission for review. And staff recommends that the planning commission approve the application with findings and conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Questions to staff?
Wendy, just for clarity, you stated that for all, we're expanding to 11 events, and for each event, there will only be three food trucks per event?
Correct.
And in their project narrative, they have noted limit of six food trucks per event, and that was just referencing the past? So they're not?
Right. They are current proposals for three food trucks at each event.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Steve?
Given the concerns that the state, the nation, and the community have regarding the coronavirus, do we need to put anything in these conditions of approval to the effect that this event should not go forward if it's inconsistent with recommendations of county
We could, but I don't know what good it would do. I mean, even leaving it out, it's a business decision, just like anything else. I think the intent is to discourage congregations of certain amounts of people. We can certainly ask the applicant what that would do and perhaps what kind of direction they would take themselves.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Why we would want to limit them to just three food trucks when previously they could have up to six? It says it's on. Hello? I have to get closer, and I might have germs on it. Why are we suggesting that we should limit the food trucks to just three when in the past they've had six?
That was what was proposed by the applicant.
Okay. Seems strange they would want to limit themselves so much, but that's a comment.
Wendy, has there been any comments about last year's events from the public in the neighborhood?
Not one.
And were they noticed on this expansion?
Yes.
And nothing there either?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up for, if there's no other questions, to public comment. Does anyone from the public care to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back.
Mr. Chair, if I could, to respond to Commissioner Barbos, is we could put a condition
or craft a condition that says the applicant shall consider the requirements of the state and health departments and consider those things accordingly. That's more of an advisory or a training moment, if you will, but it's certainly nothing binding on.
Because it's my understanding that it's not a mandatory thing to cancel events. It's?
Right. It's, we're in the world of permissive "shoulds" right now. It may change to "shall's."
Go ahead, Steve.
That may change. And so if we put in there that it has to be consistent, then if there are no mandatory guidelines, there's nothing to worry about. If there, but there are, then we've already got it built in that they have to comply. I think we're just in a rapidly changing landscape.
If it becomes mandatory, they're going to have to do it whether we put it as the condition of the temporary use permit anyway.
I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. So does anyone have any further discussion, or otherwise I'll take a motion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
If we allow this to be approved administratively going forward, would planning staff be issuing temporary use permits going forward?
Yes.
Do you?
Yes, we currently have that. I was waiting for the phone thing to work. Yeah, we currently have that ability, but I think in the past, the directors moved it up to the commission because of the frequency. So what we're saying is because there's been no bad history, that we'll go ahead and take that on ourselves, and we always have the ability to bump it up to the commission anyway. But because of the past practice, it's been a pretty good neighborhood partner.
But it's a temporary use permit?
But it will be the issue of temporary use permit. That is correct.
Without planning commission?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So is that your, the staff position that you want to take that on?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I know I'm way down here. The only thing I would like to add then is that the staff's administrative approval of this event can take place unless there is a substantive change in the nature of the event. In other words, if they wanted to have music outdoors, if they wanted to change the nature of the activities and have a band with dancing outside, or whatever might conceivably come up, that if there's a substantive change in the use, then it would come back before the commission.
Yeah, so right now, our code does allow the staff to do temporary use permits, period.
Mm-hmm.
And at the discretion of the director, he can forward them, pass them along to the commission. But we can certainly understand your direction tonight. We, if it's substantially the same as what we've seen, no problem. And then that discretion on my part would be to say, wait a minute. It would, in the case of music, it would be a music venue license, but if they expand it to 42 trucks, let's say, that's a significant shift.
Well, is there, is there value in incorporating some language, given the fact that none of us will live forever, and you may not be here when the event changes five years from now?
That would be fine, yes.
Okay. Steve, did you have something else? Commissioner Barbos, did you have something else?
Well, I was originally going to say, I was, I would just prefer that it come back to the planning commission, just because this is an expansion. We don't know how it's going to go. And if there are issues with, the public wants to raise, it's much easier for them to address us than it is to figure out where to go and who do they talk to at the, at City Hall. So that would, it's not a big deal to me. I just think that, because this event has not always gone without public opposition. I remember its early days, you know. I just, that would, my preference would be that it stays with the planning commission, but it's not a big thing for me if everybody else sees it otherwise.
If I'm not mistaken, there is a scheduled review at the end of the year for the event to see how it went. So I would suggest that we postpone the decision on whether future events come back to the commission or handled ministerially until that time. Then we've seen, had a chance to see whether there's been any public input about the change or the expansion. Everybody go along with that?
This is a question for Wendy. I think as presently constituted, we actually have a condition that we'll need to remove in order to do what you've just said, because right now, we set it up that it will not come. So we can remove that condition, but then when the review comes up, it'll be a review, and then we'll also have to advertise it to determine at that point upon the review whether to then allow for an extension or not.
Okay.
And typically, the event organizer does the post-event review and the review of the next series at the same meeting, so.
Well, it's up to the commission however you want to let it go, but I see both sides. Somebody want to try a motion?
I was just going to throw out kind of a follow-up to Commissioner O'Neil's comment. I think that because of the history of the event and that there has not been any complaint specifically about the number of food trucks, would there be value in not, in simply broadening the, the conditions to allow for the three to six trucks at the discretion of the applicant? I personally don't care, because I can find food with just three trucks, but maybe someone who wants a broader rate. I'm just throwing it out there for consideration.
Good. Sure. O'Neil?
To follow up on that, I love the event, but sometimes three trucks is just a little bit limited for drawn people that just want to come down and have a meal and don't necessarily even go inside for the music. I don't know if the vendor, if Sebastiani Foley Family is interested in that, but I would rather see the limit raised to six rather than three.
Are we ready for a motion now?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve as suggested, with the exception that the event not be, that it be limited to a maximum of six trucks. Would that suck?
And does that include ministerial approval?
And that would include a ministerial review.
Subject to substantive change.
Subject to substantive.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion, otherwise roll call, vote.
Can I further discuss?
Yeah, you may.
Sorry. I would, I'm okay with the administrative approval if, but since they're expanding the number of events, keeping it at three, but if we're going to expand to six and then also expand the number, well, I guess we're not expanding to six. It's always, has it always been six?
Yeah.
It's always been six, but they're asking for three now.
I guess the question would be, if we keep it at six, but then expand the number of events, should we review it one more time just to make sure? Although they might not even do six, so we're just giving them the option. Right.
Well, we have a motion in a second, so let's take a roll call.
Commissioner Barbos?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Barnett?
Aye.
Commissioner Bohar?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Wellender?
Yes.
Chair Felder?
Yes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
That will move on to the public hearings, and we will go to 7.3, which is the discussion, possible action to approve a use permit variance, the application of Tom and Renee Scherstad for the use permit to legalize an overhead, overheight fence and retaining wall. And we are looking for a motion to continue this item to April 9th at the request of the applicant.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have to have any public on this? Okay. Roll call, vote, please. You've got to do a roll call now.
Is that what you're trying to tell me to do?
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Wellender?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbos?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett? Commissioner Barnett. Just both of you say yes. Commissioner Bohar?
Aye.
Commissioner Bohar and Chair Felder?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that will move to the meeting of the 9th, assuming we have a meeting on the With that, we'll go back to, now to 7.2, which is the discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve a use permit amendment for Freedman's Home Improvement Center to allow a permanent generator at 1360 Broadway, including the action to approve a categorical exemption for, according to Section 15303 of the State CECL guidelines. With that, staff report. Christina?
Thank you so much. The project site is located at 1360 Broadway, Freedman's Home Improvement Store. It's located in the northeast corner of Broadway and Leveroni, Napier Road. The project site is a 5.8 acre site and is developed with 30, about 39,000 square foot of retail space, 1,300 square feet of administrative office space, as well as a shed that supports the lumberyard and associated parking, the garden center, and landscaping. Directly to the north is Train Town, which is located in the unincorporated county. To the south is the Sunrise Villa Assisted Living Facility across Napier Road, as well as the automobile repair shop. And to the east is a single-family residential, and to the west is the salsa trading company and the lodge. The project is located in the Gateway District and is owned Gateway Commercial. The required setbacks are 20-foot front and street-side setback. As proposed, the generator would be setback over 300 feet from Broadway and 160 feet from Napier Road. There's no required rear setback, but as proposed, the generator would have a rear setback of 212 feet. And the side setback on the east is required to be 15.4 feet, and as proposed, would be 260 feet from the eastern property line and 220 from the western property line. As discussed in the staff report, the applicant is proposing a 400-kilowatt emergency diesel generator that would allow the entire store to operate during planned and emergency power outages. The generator would have a 650-gallon diesel fuel tank that was built into the base of the unit. The generator would be affixed to a concrete slab that would be located within the existing lumberyard. It would be fenced with an eight-foot-tall, black, vinyl-coated fence for security and safety, and would be connected to an automatic transfer switch that would automatically turn on in the case of a power outage. As mentioned, it's located in the center of the property, which is perfect for sound attenuation, and there is a built-in sound enclosure as well to further reduce the noise. The unit itself would be approximately seven feet wide, 11 feet long, and eight feet tall. There's some pictures of the proposed location. The noise from the generator would be regulated by Chapter 956. For commercial properties, the code states that no person shall produce, suffer, or allow to be produced by any machine, animal, or device, noise greater than 65 intermittent or 55 constant as measured on any commercial property unless specifically authorized by a use permit. The generator that is proposed would have a sound level of 76 decibels at a distance of 23 feet. At the property line, the closest property line, about 240 feet, the noise level would be attenuated to 55 decibels. And there's a little bit of a discrepancy between the measured setbacks and the measurements in the noise report. Some of the direct setbacks would go through a building, and as ever, noise would take a slightly different path as it would be buffered from the building. So the closest distance that the noise would travel would be 240 feet. So as, the noise report is demonstrating that the project would be in compliance with the noise standard, and also as conditioned, the city would be requiring demonstration through follow-up studies within 90 days of installation. Before you hear the findings for your use permit, and I'll open it up for questions.
Questions to staff? Seeing none, we'll open it up to the public. Does anyone from the public care to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, possible action.
I would just want to say that I think I fully support this application. I think Freedman's did demonstrate in our recent events the very willingness to keep open and to provide services as best they can in the blackouts in the past. And so I think this will allow for a little bit more continuity. And I think that based upon the report, it's meeting the criteria. I think we should support it.
I certainly agree with Commissioner Wellender's comments. I fully support this. It seems to me that we're getting a proliferation of these generators around, they're going to be, keep going, and we're going to have a lot of them in the future. Should we be concerned at all about the collaborative noise of these things as they, as they grow in numbers, or should we just deal with that when it pops up? Anybody concerned about that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can, myself and the chief billing official, we're going to be looking at possibly preparing an ordinance with respect to the creation of noise standards for emergency generators or fixed generators, mobile, stationary, whatever, in the coming months, certainly before the next PSPA, PS, PS, yeah, PSPS situation again in the fall. So anticipate that coming within the next 90 to 120 days, assuming we can get some more meetings set up.
So that presumably would address cumulative effects.
I assume these emergency generators are only pl- I, I assume these emergency generators are only planned to be run during PSPSs?
Or, or other emergencies, yes.
Right.
Emergency situations, which PSPS will be on.
So I, I have a feeling they would be sort of unique situations where maybe we'll have a sound situation, but it'll be sort of targeted and reasonable and understandable. That's the way I view it.
So the city of Mill Valley, what they've done is they actually, in September of last year, they basically said, free state, knock yourself out, run your generators twenty-four seven, we don't care, it's an emergency. Not quite sure we're going to end up there, but the point being is we need to address those particular types of installations.
Commissioner.
Are you aware, David, as to whether or not the senior care facility across the street on Napa Road has an emergency generator?
Wendy says they don't.
Any further discussion, otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve item seven point two as submitted.
Second.
Roll call vote please.
Okay, Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett.
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Barnett.
Aye.
Commissioner Bobos.
Yes.
Commissioner Bohar.
Yes.
Commissioner Wallander, Vice Chair Wallander.
Yes.
And Chair Felder.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Moving right along. We are now on item seven point one, which is a discussion, possible action of an application of Sonoma Valley Community Health Center for an exception to the parking standards for an optometry clinic at one nine three one two Sonoma Highway, including the action to approve a categorical exemption of CECL guidelines for the conversion of existing small structures from one use to another. And with that, we'll have a staff report from Wendy, please.
Thank you Chair Felder and members of the commission. Just a moment. While I get the presentation.
Nice Schlumbergia there. It's a.
Oh, is that?
Schlumbergia rupestris. It's commonly called a Christmas cactus.
The, the flower. There we go. Thank you. By way of background, building one that fronts Sonoma Highway is developed with an eighteen thousand square foot multi-tenant commercial building, referred to as the Old Bull Center. Building two in the back consists of one thousand, or sixteen thousand eight hundred square feet. Building two was originally approved as a warehouse, but in two thousand and one, the city council authorized the conversion of the building to office use as part of a retrofit intended to reduce its mass relative to the adjoining single-family residences on the east. In two thousand and seven, the planning commission approved a use permit in conjunction with an exception to the parking standards in the amount of ten spaces to allow six thousand square feet of the existing office space in building two to be converted to medical office use. In two thousand and seven, a hundred and fourteen spaces existed on the site, and ten spaces were proposed to be added by reconfiguring and restriping the existing parking lot area. However, due to the California Building Code accessible parking space size requirements and parking space maneuverability, just two spaces were added. So there are currently a hundred and sixteen parking spaces on the site. The applicant is proposing to convert a portion of empty undeveloped space in the second floor area of building two to retail and optometry services. The applicant has calculated the total area of building two at sixteen thousand three hundred and ninety-five square feet. The optometry clinic will operate Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. Four full-time employees will provide services, including eye screenings and the sale of eyeglasses. Up to three customers will be served each hour. Existing parking for the Old Bull Center is a hundred and sixteen spaces, which is less than the parking requirement of a hundred and twenty-two spaces for the mix, use, mix of uses on the site. Therefore, a parking exception in the form of six spaces required for the proposed use. Here's a site plan of the property indicating where the buildings and the parking spaces are. For retail uses, the city's parking and loading regulations require one space for each three hundred square feet of floor area. Twenty spaces are required for the new retail use, and fourteen spaces are available. While the existing parking provided for the Old Bull Center is adequate to provide for the existing uses within the building, the proposed new retail and optometry services requires the provision of additional parking or an exception to the normal parking standards. Staff as well, as well as the applicant conducted a number of, of parking counts. On, staff conducted nine separate surveys throughout different days of the week and different times of the day. The parking space dimensions, currently how the parking spaces are laid out, the space dimensions are less than the standard parking space of ten feet wide and twenty feet long, and most of these spaces are considered compact. The project is not proposing any changes to the parking dimensions, and this approach is supported by staff as the parking dimensions appear to function on the site, and issues have not been brought to staff's attention. Although the planning commission has the discretion to require the parking configuration to conform to the municipal code. If this is the case, that would increase the parking exception number from approximately six spaces to twenty-two spaces. There are certain parking exception findings this commission must make in order to approve the application, and staff's recommending the planning commission approve the project subject to findings and conditions of approval, and that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Wendy. Questions of staff?
Wendy, I just want to understand a little better the two, the two thousand and seven parking exception. There, there were going to be ten spaces added by restriping, but there are only two. What was the parking exception allowed there? What was the amount of it?
Sure, they got a parking exception for ten spaces, but for a number of reasons, the, the space, or, they got an, an exception for ten spaces, and they were required to install ten additional spaces. But due to the California Building Code requirements for the accessibility parking size and maneuverability of some of the, the spaces in the southeast area, there were three parking spaces in this area that had to be removed so people could back out of these spaces. I don't know if you can see my pointer on the screen. It doesn't look like it's working, but some spaces had to be removed because of maneuverability, and the parking size had to be increased for accessibility spaces. So those spaces didn't, weren't installed.
How many, actually, did you say two were added?
Right.
So, so there were eight short at that point, right? Have they still got an exception? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they got an exception for ten spaces.
But they only, and they were supposed to add ten, but they.
Right, and so the parking requirement at the time for their use that they were proposing was greater than the, the use that is there now. So when they got the parking exception, they were proposing a larger area to be used by medical offices, which has a higher parking requirement than retail.
Okay, I don't quite follow that, but did they come up short on what they were supposed to provide by eight spaces?
Yes.
But you're suggesting that because of the change in use, that was okay?
No, they didn't. Back in two thousand and seven, they were required to install it or restripe to create additional parking, and that was not done.
Not done. So how would you characterize the result of all that as far as parking?
Well, the parking counts that staff did indicated that there was adequate parking on the site at ten noon, or one and four, to accommodate all the uses on site.
Okay. I think I get it.
Other questions to staff?
I have a question. There was a, in the staff report, there mentioned illegal parking on the north property line. Is that counted in terms of a number of spaces?
No.
Okay.
No, that, we're talking about the spaces on the northwest portion along the north side of building one. There are currently striped parking spaces, and they'll need to remove those spaces and, and put signs up that parking is prohibited there.
So those spaces have not been counted in terms of the total hundred and sixteen or whatever?
Correct.
Okay. And then I seem to remember a, a few years ago, a small bowling alley being approved here, and I remember parking being discussed as an issue. Is that permit expired? That's, I mean, you mean, is that not going to be part of the conversation?
Yeah, unfortunately, nomable isn't going to be going in at that location.
Okay.
They did get a parking exception, but they're not going to.
Okay, so it's, so that permit is expired? It's irrelevant?
It hasn't expired, but the applicant has told me they're not going to pursue it.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, we'll take it out to the public. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
So I'm going to thin and sanitize my hands first. I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank all of you for the work that you put in tonight to ensure that this meeting occurred. I know it was very difficult to ensure that there's six feet around everyone and to supply the hand sanitizer and everything like that. And as a healthcare provider, I really truly appreciate your efforts tonight. Sure. So my name is Cheryl Johnson. I'm CEO of Sonoma Valley Community Health Center. I also have here tonight, also representing the health center, Michael Woods, who is our attorney, and Andy Elk here, who is our project consultant from Greg Factor and Associates. Consistent with your efforts to keep us safe, we ask the twelve supporters who agreed to be here tonight to not attend this meeting. Sonoma Valley Community Health Centers are fairly qualified health center that addresses the lack of access and disparities that the uninsured and underinsured face in the healthcare sector. Our mission is to provide accessible quality healthcare to those who need it, especially the underserved. Our vision is to be recognized in providing patient and community-centered healthcare in collaboration with other organizations. So I'm going to go through this slide very, very quickly. This is obviously our mission statement, which is to be recognized as helping people who are underserved, and then our mission and our vision statement, which I won't go through. But believe me when I tell you that what we're trying to do here tonight is consistent with both our mission and our vision. The next few slides will tell a little bit about what it is that we do. Our patient population is about eighty-seven percent medical and uninsured. Our, our demographics in terms of race is about sixty-one percent Latino or Hispanic, and right now we are seeing about eleven, seventeen hundred and seventy-one people who have compromised visions. And that means they have a chronic illness that will affect their eyesight. So either they have hypertension or diabetes. This is what we did last year. I know this is accurate because I had to submit it to the federal government, and this is what I gave them. So we see about seven thousand unduplicated patients in a year, and they generate about thirty-nine thousand visits in that given year. And then it tells you a little bit about the medical appointments and the dental appointments, but the number that's most interesting here is the number of patients that we refer for vision services. So some of them are the diabetics and the hypertensives that we talked about, and others are the ones who need to have annual eye checks. So for the population that we serve, in order for them to get those annual eye checks and to have their insurance or their lack of insurance be accepted, they have to go to Petaluma, Santa Rosa, or Napa. And it's been our experience that when we send people outside of the community, they don't go. So on the next slide here, this tells a little bit about the specialty care. We've tried to bring some of the specialty care inside of our health centers, and there are some others where we will continue to have to send them out. But this is what we currently do. So we offer specialty care, dental, medical, and classes and outreach. So let's talk a little bit about the optometry clinic, because that's why we're all here tonight. Obviously, this is an overview of the building, and Wendy talked a little bit about that building, and obviously, we're building two in the back. And then, obviously, you've seen this slide, so I'm not going to bore you with that one. And you've seen that slide, and you've probably seen that slide. So let's go on to the next slide. So this is the proposed footprint for this building. The area to the left is really the optometry center there, and obviously, the elevator's there and all that other wonderful stuff, which is really, really helpful. It, the, one of the things about this building is that it has an elevator, and because we're healthcare, we're required to have an elevator, and it's one of the things that attracted us to this building. Next. So I want to talk a little bit about the hours and the staffing and the services that we provide. So we will be open eight hours per day with one hour for lunch, so we'll have seven hours of patient care. When we're up and fully operational, there'll be four point oh, full-time equivalent employees, and the services that we'll be, we'll be providing is eye exams and the cell of frames and prescription lenses. So I've had a couple of questions from some of the tenants about, you know, whether or not it's going to be a large kind of retail cell, and it's basically, you get an eye exam, and based on your eye exam, if you need glasses, we will prescribe you the glasses. So it's not open to mass retail selling of, of frames. The volume that we're anticipating in year one is about two patients per hour, and then once we get operational, it'll be about three patients per hour, which includes actually the exams and the pickup of the glasses and the frames once they've been created for that individual patient. This is our proposed timeline, and I say propose right now because, you know, things change, you get a virus, cause a pandemic. Right now, though, this is what we're, we're proposing, okay, but it may change. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the things, because Wendy did an excellent job in, in talking about what we're proposing to do. And the one thing I want to be very clear about is the fact that we've been working with the tenants who are in the building to try and address some of the issues that they have noted, some of the concerns, and one of which is even though our studies don't necessarily support it, there was concern that the hardest times to park in the lot is between eight AM and ten AM. And based on some feedback that we've heard about some concerns, the one thing that we are amenable to is that if that's the point in time where the parking is the worst, then we'll, are willing to kind of adjust our hours up to the ten AM to make sure that we're not adding to that congestion. The other thing we've talked to some of the tenants about, and tenants have talked to other people about, is the lack of local management of the building. And Mr. Wagner is here, and we had a discussion earlier today, and he's in agreement that when we sign the lease, that he's willing to put into our lease that he will have local representation to help manage that building. We believe that that will help with some of the other concerns that the tenants have about parking. So we're really trying to reach out and address the concerns of the tenants. Our, our biggest issue right now is the fact that, again, we have looked for a very long time for a building, and this is a building that will work for us, and we're really committed to making it work. The reason why we chose optometry, by the way, is because there are residents and community stakeholders who, in our community needs accessibility, which we do every three years, indicated that optometry was a very much needed services for the people that we tend to serve. And so in response to that, that is something that we're looking at. And in order to fulfill our commitment to the people that we serve here in the community, we are willing to work with some of the issues and concerns to make sure that we are providing the services to our community and not adding angst to the tenants who are currently there. the services to our community and not adding angst to the tenants who are currently there. If it would please the commission's nerves, I would like to be able to bring Bruce Wagner up. He is a representative, the owner group of the building, and he can kind of vouch and answer some of your questions about some of the lease negotiations regarding this project. I will state for the record that my board has stated that I can't finalize a lease for the property until we have resolved the parking issue. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Good evening. I'm, I'm Bruce Wagner. My brother and myself own this property and have for thirty years. And, you know, I just want to essentially verify or, you know, acknowledge, you know, that the, our understanding for the need for local property management for this property. And we're in the process, it always was our plan when this last space was rented, that the need would be there. And we're currently in the process of interviewing property managers. So I mainly want to, you know, give my affirmation and, you know, validation that that is our plan. I don't know if there's other questions or are there anything else you'd like me to address? I didn't really prepare a presentation for you, per se.
Does any from, from the commission have any further questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public here to speak on this item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Michael Woods, appearing on behalf of the health center. I just had one question, and my address is eight forty-six Broadway in Sonoma. Wendy, on the fire department's comments, they showed an exhibit that crosshatched the area that had to be striped for no parking. And they left the three spaces that are currently marked as not crosshatched. So I just wanted to clarify that the three spaces in the middle of the property, right on the northern fence, would remain because the fire department, in my understanding, was not requiring those to be removed.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else care to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for a discussion and possible action.
Sure. Well.
I do have a question for the applicant, if I could trouble you to come back. As you well know, parking is always a, a hot topic for a lot of people. How flexible, if, if parking becomes an issue, how flexible are you in terms of adjusting the, the hours of service timeframe wise?
Sure, we're, we're actually very flexible with that. As a matter of fact, as I noted, we are, you know, our initial intention, as Wendy stated, was to open from basically nine to five. And what we're basically saying is, based on the comments that we have from the current tenants, they're telling us that the lock jam is between ten, eight and ten. So we're, currently, our plans are to adjust the hours up to ten AM so that we're not creating additional congestion.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have another question for the applicant.
If you would, please stay, I have another question.
Occurred to me.
Sure.
I was looking at your floor plan and there, could you, can we flip back to that? Yeah, it just passed by, the floor plan inside. Yeah, that's it. How many personnel were in there? I understand that there was going to be three customers an hour, and there were going to be three or four dispensers of optical equipment or something.
Sure. So I'm going to try and show you this without actually having a clicker in my hand. But as you go through the, off the elevator and you're walking straight back, that there will be, the yellow area there will be the optometry clinic in and of itself.
Okay, I'm having trouble figuring out, what, is everything brand new here that we're looking at that's going to be installed?
Everything is brand new. The currently, the, the building is to its studs.
It's all shell now?
It's all shell.
Okay, so your, your operation, this opticians' operation is only in the green dotted lines? Is that what I'm saying? What are these offices around the outside that are brown?
So part of the, the optometry clinic in and of itself are the, that, again, that yellow area in the upper right-hand corner. The area that's over to the left is actually administrative offices.
Are those additional personnel that are going to be in this new space?
There will be additional personnel there. There'll be six additional personnel there as well.
So how, so what is the total of the personnel that are going to occupy these offices? I, I didn't see that in the report. Did I miss something, Wendy?
It's four for the optometry clinic and six for the administrative side.
Sorry?
It's four for optometry and six for the administrative side.
Six administrative people?
Correct.
So there's, how many total people in this space?
Ten.
Ten. Oh, I'm, Wendy, what did I miss out of the report? I thought, I didn't know there were ten. I thought there were four or five or something like that.
Yep, the staff report stated that there would be four employees.
Four, right.
So that was.
But there are actually ten.
That was incorrect.
Okay, well, that, why, why is that different?
I think it's, Wendy, if I can answer for you. I think it's different because of the fact that we're focusing in on the optometry area. The optometry area is the actual service area that we're talking about. But the intention is that the six thousand one hundred and forty square feet would be used for optometry and for the administrative spaces. And that was, always been the intention.
Okay, so the parking is not figured on personnel, it's on square foot three hundred feet per parking space, right? So the fact they have ten, I guess, is not material for parking.
Right.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any, any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I, I am very supportive of this health clinic and, and feel that, that it's a great benefit to the community as a whole. So I want to encourage its expansion in this way so that the local community has access to additional services. Given the study that was done on the usage of the parking lot, I really don't have any difficulty granting an exception and feel that is appropriate in this case. And so I will support the project with the exception going forward.
Thank you. Other discussion?
Well, I think this, this operation certainly has a public benefit mission, and it's certainly good to welcome more business and economic and employment additions that it brings to it. I got familiar with this property back when the bowling alley and the bar and the restaurant were being put in, was that eighteen months ago that I was put in? So I, I've been there during that time, and I'm here this time. And I, I must say, I believe there are some parking issues that ought to be resolved. I had two tours down there this week that were early in the morning, eight-thirty to about ten. And the parking situation, it, it was acknowledged that the parking was certainly more active in that early morning. I have a few comments to make. I made a summary of those comments and I sent them to staff. I believe you may have seen some of those comments that I made. So I'm, I'm going to be a little redundant, but I think these things are worth mentioning because they are, they're issues that have gone on in the past, I think, that have exacerbated the parking problem. And they, they do need to be acknowledged, and I think they need to be addressed. There's no reason these, all these things can't be massaged and solved, but I, I do think they are worth bringing up at this, at this point, when this is being considered. The parking between eight o'clock and, and ten o'clock was, was rather substantially different than it was at other times during the day. I've also been there in the afternoon and one o'clock, three o'clock in the afternoon. It's dramatically different. At nine-thirty in the morning, there were twenty-two spaces available, but eight of those were in the, in the far lanes or not, that are not marked. So they, you have to count them as being in spaces after they're going to be eliminated. Can't go into the parking lanes anymore, into the fire lanes. So there were, there were fourteen net spaces in the entire site on March tenth at nine-thirty. That's, that's not enough to, to take care of the minimum accepted number of spaces, which I think was fourteen. Well, it's exactly fourteen. They, it would be full. There'd be, there'd be no more spaces left if that continued to be. On March eleventh, that was Wednesday, I, I went there at eight-thirty earlier, there were eighteen available, and there were nine parked in the fire lanes, which gives you a net of nine, which means if nine people came in, which is substantially less than the, the available spaces in the, in the report, you'd, you'd be full. There would be no spaces. So that is a, it's a very important issue. People, people that work in there are coming to work, and they're not going to have a space. They're going to have to park on the highway or something like that. And customers that come into that investment outfit are going to have to park a long way away from their appointment. And so are the, the physical therapy people in the back. So that really needs to be addressed. So why is that the case? The situation is that the use has changed with the fitness club, and it became clear to me eighteen months ago. They run classes that are very, very popular at the fitness center. And the, the people drive in in great numbers between eight and ten, and they, and they park at random. They don't, they don't park around the front of the fitness center. They park in the, in the Jones Investment Group, even though there are professional signs there that tell them they're going to be towed. They just park there and they park down in the, in the physical therapy clinic. It wasn't just an observation. I went to the trouble of talking to the desk people and, and some of the managers in the therapy clinic and in the, in the investment clinic. And they feel like there, there's a lot of tension and conflict over time. And I, I appreciate Mr. Wagner addressing the problem. And, you know, it may have been that you, you saw some of my comments, but not having a local management or an onsite manager has caused a lot of conflict, at least over the past eighteen months, twenty-four months, that, that I've gone over there and talked to people. So that is very important, and I'm, and I'm pleased that you're going to have that in place. But otherwise, you have conflicts between the, the different tenants over parking, and nobody is mitigating those conflicts and problems and perhaps enforcing some kind of a reasonable parking plan where people are, can be designated to park here or there rather than at random. So I, I think that's a really important issue. It was also pointed out by a couple of the desk people that the Kovacs Motors operation happens to be the same ownership in the fitness center, the Kovacs on both of those. There were four or five abandoned cars or cars that were, been sitting there for a month or two that were taking up parking spaces. They were covered with dirt and leaves under the, under the wheels, so they've clearly been there. They're waiting to be repaired and refurbished and sold. So Mr. Kovacs needs to get some direction about not parking there because his business is next door on another piece of property. It's also been mentioned that they have up to ten cars a week that are the cars he's displaying for sale. Doesn't have enough room for him in his parking lot on the street. So there, there's ten or twelve cars sometime during the week, up to ten or twelve cars parked in the parking lot and parking spaces that are BMWs and Audis and Volkswagens that he's going to sell. So there's up to fourteen or fifteen cars are being taken up during the week, and that needs to be, I think, handled by the, the onsite manager. I think that's about all I have to say, but I, you know, a lot of that's been acknowledged by the applicant and, and by the owner, but, but I think that there needs to be some follow-up in some way to ensure that all this gets back together because it's a situation that's been existent for some time, and it, it has a habit of momentum if it's not reviewed and revised at some time. But I, I certainly welcome the use. And one other comment. The, the, your, your operation next door has got a very big parking lot. I think there's sixty-eight parking spaces in there. There were just a few spaces available when I, when I was over there at nine and fifteen on Wednesday. And I must tell you that some of the staff people back on this subject property suggested that, that overage parking from there was coming down into that space, which contributed to the crowded parking that I observed. So that, that should be addressed in some way. I, I think each. Pardon me? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Would you step up to the microphone?
We've closed the public hearing.
That's fine.
But.
Fine, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Burpos.
Well, like Commissioner Barnett, I am very supportive of the health center and all they're doing for our community. I think they're providing very essential services that would not otherwise be available for folks here. So I want to see this optometry use go in. I, I think that, and I appreciate Mr. Bohar's detective work on the parking issues. And I think you've hit upon the solution to the problem, which is Mr. Kovacs and his cars. And I think that, that message got heard loud and clear. I'm getting nods from all the people that are connected with the applicant. And so I'm, I'm confident that that's going to be solved. So assuming that is solved and they don't start their hours of operation until ten o'clock, I think that I'm completely comfortable with the parking exception because I don't think there's going to be a shortage of parking at that point. So I will be supporting this with the exception.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill?
Likewise, I'm in support of this project. And I think I have one comment. I'm just wondering if it's a possibility to shift some of the hours and do a Saturday because Edward Jones is closed on Saturday, and some of the timing might be different, and some of the clientele might be more available on a Saturday. And it would do two things, to make it available for somebody who can't go during the week, but also to address some of the parking issues. So just a, a thought that I had, that I wondered if it was under any consideration.
Mr. Barnett?
I've got one other question. I don't know if there's anybody here who can answer it. It looks to me, in, in looking at an aerial view of this property, that there are two avenues of Egress, one on the south side and one on the north side. And that while they appear to be marked with arrows as one way, my question is why the fire department decided that the area to the north was necessary for the twenty-foot drive for the emergency vehicles when there is in fact equally as much space to the south with the parking marked as it is? Is it customary for there to be twenty feet of emergency vehicle access on both the north and south of a property?
Yeah, in this case it is, yes. The fire marshal was very clear that he needed twenty feet because you come in on the south side and you would exit on the north side.
No, I get that, but I'm, but in an emergency, frankly, they're going to get in there any way they can, south side, north side, or, or however you would do it. I, I don't really understand why the, the access on both north and south are simultaneously necessary.
Yeah, I don't think that fire truck wants to back, back up and have to maneuver like that. They just want to be able to circle through.
Okay, seems excessive to me and an unfortunate waste of, of some space.
Are there any other discussion? I'm wondering if, if the commission would want to add a, a condition of approval to, in approving this use with the parking exception, that there, it would, they would provide for local management, just to have it on the record. provide for local management, just to have it on the record. It seems like it, they intend to do it anyway, but it, it might be well to state it, uh, as we're expanding the use and, and asking for that exception, and we have, if we have local control, uh, it, I think that would be solved, but, yeah.
I'd, I'd like clarity as to what that really means, onsite or local? Because onsite management suggests it's onsite, which could be very effective in addressing trespassing vehicles, but if it's local and it's somebody that shows up periodically, I'm not sure if that type of management would be as effective in deterring...
Right. And what, and what is local?
Yeah.
I mean, Santa Rosa, San Francisco, Sonoma, you know?
It's, it, I mean, the basic question is, do we even want to put the condition on them, and then which, what condition would we put on?
Well, I, I would be okay with that because the use permit runs with the land, so basically the property owner is getting this use permit, not the applicant. I mean, even though it is a specialized use permit.
I know you've closed the public hearing, but if we are going to discuss that condition, we'd like to be heard on it.
Uh, I will reopen the public hearing and have you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we've discussed this with the property owner and the, there are some distinctions between what type of property management we actually need. The owners have their own property management company, which deals with things like the accounting and the bookkeeping and the billing and all that, so we don't need the kind of full-time, full-service property management firm. So we're trying to work through what language do I make sure is in the lease, which we're currently negotiating and won't execute unless this issue is addressed to the health center's satisfaction because we have the same concern. We want it to work. But we want to be sure that there is somebody that is monitoring the parking lot. That's the key. It's not so much how we define property management, except that we want to have somebody here in Sonoma who can be contacted in order to address on-the-ground, onsite parking concerns. Bruce, am I stating that correctly? Okay, that's what we have in mind.
And that's, that's great. I think that's, that's all we're, we're asking. It's that, if we get the terminology correct, so hopefully staff can craft that, uh, that, that type of a condition.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll close the public hearing again. Um, anything else that anybody wants to discuss, or do we want to go ahead, Steve?
I, I would also like to put in the conditions of approval that the hours of operation are as, uh, offered by, uh, the applicant, so that it starts at ten and, and include with that the, the local property, uh, site manager is what I, how I would refer to that person. Uh, local site manager to, uh, enforce and, uh, deal with property, uh, parking issues on, on the site. And I would be willing to take a stab at a motion.
Okay.
Uh, I, uh, move that we approve this application for a use permit and grant the parking exception with the conditions of approval drafted by staff and added to that, uh, a condition saying that the operation, uh, the operational hours of the optometry clinic will start at ten AM. Uh, it's up to them whether they want to extend it, it's to six to make up for the lost hour, and that the, um, the owner of the property have a site manager operating out of S- Sonoma Valley who is available on a regular basis as needed to resolve issues related to the building and parking.
I'll second it.
Yeah, the, it's fine.
Okay, uh, are we ready for a roll call vote?
Commissioner Barbos.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett.
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Barnett.
Aye.
Commissioner Bohart.
Aye.
Commissioner Willander.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Chair Felder.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Yes.
I'd like to revisit the municipal code parking space dimensions that seem very archaic and large and so that we can maybe revisit that. I haven't worked on a ten-foot wide parking space for years.
That will segue into our next item. Thank you. So with that, we have, uh, the next item, eight is items for discussion, which is the discussion and update regarding general plan development code updates. And the way I'd like to proceed on this is I would like to get, uh, from our planning director an update on what's been taking place, especially since the joint meeting between, uh, the commission and city council, and what, what things have been happening. And then at that point, unless there's some questions on, on what he has given us, I would like to open it up to the public and take some public input. We have a very dedicated person in the public that's wanting to speak, um, and then we can come back and, and further discuss this. Uh, and my intent has been somewhat tempered by the, uh, the change in, uh, how we have to operate these days with the coronavirus, but I still think that I'd like to open up the discussion and, and, uh, see if we can come up with a plan on how we can participate as a planning commission. But first of all, I turn it over to, uh, our planning director for his update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, uh, as you know, this, you held a joint meeting on January twenty-seventh. A lot's been going on in, in the world around us, but, uh, certainly within the, uh, the last thirty days or so, um, two of those ad hoc committees have been formed, the council formed them. Uh, we have, uh, Vice Mayor Hunley and Councilmember Cook, uh, working with us on the, uh, develop, excuse me, the urban growth boundary, um, provisions on the ad hoc, and we have, uh, along with council, uh, planning commissioners, uh, Larry Barnett and, uh, Council, uh, Planning Commissioner Steve Barbos, um, that has met, that group, ad hoc, has met once and will meet again, uh, and I'd like to have the commissioners explain about their involvement and some of the things that they've been looking at with respect to the second ad hoc. That's had a little bit more momentum, if you will, um, primarily because it's a, a longer path, so to speak, to amending the development code. We've had, um, two planning commissioners and two council members. We've had Mayor Harvey and, uh, Councilmember Aggermonte joining with Chair Felder and, um, Kelso Barnett, our planning commissioner here. And, uh, we've met, uh, once as that group, but the ad hoc has met actually twice, the council members have, uh, with staff, and we started a process in which we're looking at SB three thirty, SB two grant, uh, consistency, if you will, um, looking at some of the state provisions, uh, that we're trying to change, uh, to be consi, our code to be consistent with, and we're moving along in that process with consultants. The, uh, ad hoc met, it was yesterday, I think, um, with our consultant team, and we have a clear path, and I'd like you as commissioners to, uh, provide some more feedback to the rest of the commission that were not in attendance. I will say that the urban growth boundary ad hoc is probably not as complex or as time-consuming as, as the development code update process will be, uh, primarily because it's doing some wordsmithing based on the feedback that we received on January twenty-seventh. Uh, uh, legal counsel has provided some draft language. The ad hoc has responded, and there'll be another formulation of a document, uh, that will be reviewed, um, and then there'll be some form of outreach, whether it's to the public at large, we're inviting other members, I'm not quite sure yet, uh, but clearly, uh, we do have the ability to move faster on that with many, uh, changes to the UGB language or specifically, uh, implementation measure one point five one of the general plan. So with that, I'll provide that context, other than that, for those of those working on the development code, Senator Weiner has now, uh, provided us with SB nine oh four, uh, which we've just found out about today, which is somewhat son of SB fifty, um, where he introduced some draconian measures. I can tell you very simply that nine oh four, uh, nine oh four talks about allowing multifamily by right in residential zones. That's all of our yellow on our map, on our zoning map. Um, by right, which means that we would have no discretion, um, and I think, uh, it's on a graded scale. So for example, over fifty thousand population, you'll require, they'll be required to have, uh, fourplexes by right without discretionary approval. So like it a lump, but that's the kind of approach. I'm, I'm kind of concerned that that's not going to be what I would call League of California City Friendly, but we'll see as we investigate more on, in that. Um, so clearly there are, are things that we're doing with the development code, and I know that this commission, um, is particularly interested in that, we as staff are. We haven't started off on the housing element update yet per se because we're still in the RENA process of trying to figure out where that's going to end up, but we have started some analysis on vacant analysis, uh, vacant land analysis or conversion or readaptability of existing sites and the like, but, uh, we're starting along that process with our consultants. Uh, that concludes my comments.
Do you have any kind of tentative timeline on the UGB and when, uh, the next draft would be available or when you're going to be able to seek public comment?
Um, I'm not quite sure how to answer that in light of the activities of today, uh, but clearly, uh, legal counsel is in the process. It received direction to come up with another draft for circulation to the ad hoc, and I think depending on whether he got that right or not, uh, based on the comments of the, the ad hoc, then we can figure out how to approach that now that we have a new day upon us as far as how to, um, present that to the public, either in a public forum or distribution, if you will, and I defer to, uh, Commissioners Barbos and Barnett to provide their two cents on that one.
Okay. Um, I don't know if it's more appropriate to open it up to the public at this point or to, uh, continue to give some report on what's been taking place, so...
I think a big good idea here from the commissioners that are involved in the ad hocs.
Why don't, why don't we do, go that route? So if, if you would, uh, join in, either Commissioner Barbos or Commissioner Barnett on what has transpired so thus far.
Well, I'll give you, uh, my, uh, my view of what's happened. Um, essentially, the city attorney, uh, presented, uh, revised, uh, measure, uh, to be put on the ballot based upon the input and his interpretation of the input at that larger joint meeting that took place. And, uh, he presented, uh, the group, uh, with, um, essentially a marked up, uh, red-lined, um, uh, copy so that we could see, uh, where changes in the original document had taken place, what was being changed, what was being omitted, what was being replaced. He also identified, um, three-year-four issues that needed some decision-making. And, um, uh, so we had about an hour and a half meeting in which, um, there was a, a group discussion about whether or not the draft that the city attorney had presented was in fact in line with what people had heard at the meeting, and we reinforced, uh, certain points about the, the measure, um, in that discussion, for example, that any extension of the UGB should be for a hundred percent affordable housing, uh, the, uh, the, primarily for low and very low income, but all of it for affordable. And, um, uh, so by and large, I was quite pleased with the, with the revision. It was in line with, uh, uh, I think, uh, what the discussion was as well as what I understand the, um, inclinations and desires of, um, the, uh, group, the citizens to extend Sonoma's UGB have been suggesting. Um, the wordsmithing, you know, varied in, in, you know, a phrase or here or a word there, but by and large, it followed through from my point of view on the intent of it and, uh, clearly established the principle of a twenty-year boundary. And, uh, the last thing I would add is that the one area in which, um, there was, uh, some discussion and probably will be more discussion is about, you know, what will happen twenty years in the future when the measure expires. Should there be a definitive process outlined in the document, or should it be akin to the process that's being used now, which is essentially to, to review it in form of grubadi and develop the language for its extension or not, as the case may be? So, um, uh, that, those are my reflections on it. I was, I was fairly pleased. Uh, just one last thing insofar as the ongoing is concerned. There was discussion about the necessity to bring other people in on this. Uh, the issue at hand is how best to do that at this point. I think at a very minimum, what's going to happen is that the next draft will be widely shared, uh, in a public methodology, um, of certainly online, uh, announcement in the, the city's website and, and, and other methods, so that this gets out to as many interested people as, as it can be. And then, assuming that we as humanity can actually gather in, in relatively large groups, uh, I, I envision there would be another public meeting to discuss the specifics of the languages, any concerns people may have, they want to do in a public forum. Otherwise, comments, if that's not possible because of what's going on, then comments would be received, uh, basically via email or, or written communication, and, and then the group would once again discuss it. It's hard to predict what the public process is going to be, and the city attorney conceded that, uh, at the end of our meeting, that how the city operates going forward is, is at this point, is kind of mysterious. Uh, if health concerns begin to dominate, his view is that's going to, uh, subordinate any other issues pertaining to things like Brown Act and, and, and meeting timing and all kinds of things. He, and I, I don't think any of us could find any reason to disagree with it. If it's not safe to meet as a group, we won't be able to, so it's hard to say exactly what the process will be going forward.
You have anything to add, Commissioner Barbos?
Uh, just a little, um, I would agree with, uh, everything, uh, Mr. Barnett just said. Uh, from my point of view, I was very interested in seeing that the, um, the UGB, uh, language as it relates to encouraging affordable housing, uh, was as strong as possible, so I wanted some, uh, language in that it's not just in response to RENA numbers, but it would be in response to what the council also identified as a need for additional affordable housing, irrespective of RENA numbers, and there seemed to be a consensus that that was a good idea. Uh, I personally did not like the five-acre mi, minimum or maximum rather on any single, uh, application. Uh, we were all fine with the twenty, uh, but, uh, bec, and my rationale was simply that if you want to attract a developer like a mid-pin or somebody like that to do a larger project, they might need more than five acres to work with. Uh, we, uh, the city attorney, uh, advised us all that he did not think it was advisable to even touch that for fear of a, a, a secret challenge because we would be tinkering with the ordinance in a more substantive way, uh, and since, uh, we want to avoid that challenge, then we'll just have to, to live with that. Um, I think those are, it's twenty years, I guess Larry said that, that, those are things that, that come to my mind, but certainly, um, uh, if any of you have any additional thoughts, you know, please let us know, that things that needed to be, that were important to you, because, uh, it's, it's not a done, uh, deal. It's going to be, there'll be a new red-line copy, which will then be, as I understand it, uh, there may be an opportunity for the ad hoc to look at it before it goes on the city website, but it will be there as a draft and comments from the public as well as anyone else will be, uh, solicited.
Okay, I think what we'll do is we'll just continue on and give a report back from, from our, okay.
Oh, and just in terms of timeline, the, the goal for, is for the council to, uh, vote on this and approve it, uh, for the ballot by...
April.
No, is July the, July twentieth, or July one, twenty twenty, or, and so that's the op- And so, that's the operative date that it's going to go to, to be put on the ballot. So, they need to approve it by the, the end of June.
Okay, so I think we'll just report out a little bit of what happened in our ad hoc. And I, go ahead, Commissioner Barnett, go ahead first, and I'll fill in.
We met yesterday for about an hour. It was the first meeting of the entire Development Code Ad Hoc Subcommittee. We have two consultants working for us, Christine O'Rourke and Bob Brown, formerly of Novato. And they've gone through the entire Development Code and divided it up into three different color-coding terms. Subjective, quasi-subjective, and objective. Objective can stay, per the new state law. Subjective has to go. Well, it doesn't have to go, but it can't be applied to projects anymore. And then quasi-subjective are parts of our code that could be tweaked to be made objective. And so, it's actually a very substantial, our Development Code is huge. It's, according to one of the consultants, a very unique Development Code. He liked it, but it sort of combines, like, the general plan and a Development Code. And so, there is a significant amount of subjective material in there, which I'm sure the people that developed the Development Code thought was appropriate. Obviously, we're a smaller town, our economy is based on, in a large part, our charm and our design. And so, that has been tried to, that is, you know, the Development Code has been sort of created with that in mind. And so, our task is to try to retain as much of that discretion with complying with the new state law. And so, in terms of timeline, you know, quite frankly, I think we're going to have to, sorry? Yeah, our next meeting is on April 1st. I think we're going to have to go pretty, the goal is to move as quickly as possible, especially with the, the first, the subjective element of the Development Code, in terms of removing it, with the idea that as, as soon as we get a Development Code that complies with state law, we can use that to, you know, we can apply that code to any project that comes in. Because right now, if a project was turned in tomorrow, we wouldn't be able to apply any of our subjective standards. And so, the goal would be to try to, in as, in, in any way possible, try to turn some of that quasi-subjective, and even perhaps some of the subjective, into objective standards. So, that's, that's the timeline. Obviously, we're going to probably have to meet quite a bit to try to go as quickly as possible. In terms of the process, I think we discussed this yesterday, and I know the Chair would like to talk more about that. But we both believe that it's important that the entire Planning Commission contribute as much as possible, because this is sort of, I mean, I think the Development Code is the most important thing in Sonoma, quite frankly. I mean, it's, the general plan is sort of a pie-in-the-sky vision statement, in a way. But the Development Code is all the rules in the road. And so, I would ask if there are any issues you see in the Development Code to bring it to the Chair or to myself. But I do think that you won't have to, because it needs to, we need to talk about this as a group. We need to find elements of the Development Code that we've seen oftentimes, like site coverage and other things that are inconsistent. We have to, you know, and then there's going to be another phase that we've discussed in terms of, like, you know, adapting the Development Code for the Sonoma we want. And to the extent that aligns with our current general plan, we could do that. If, if it doesn't, then we have to discuss creating a new general plan, because the Development Code always responds to the general plan. There were some other comments in terms of the fact that obviously, we're all sitting six feet away from each other. If this continues, if the global economy continues to crater, we may not have a lot of projects coming before us in the next few months, and so, or years. And so, maybe we can take the time to try to get that right. But it's sort of a balancing act, and.
So, effectively, we have kind of a near-term goal, and then a far-reaching or a longer-term goal. So, the consultants were tasked with coming back with a first draft of how they think the Development Code would look as an objective Development Code, so that we're conforming to state law, including taking some of the semi-objective statements and trying to tweak them to make them objective. So, we hope, we're hoping by the 1st of April that we will have a document that has at least the objective and the tweaked semi-objective standards as a base. And, and then we realize we have the longer-term thing of what we do with the non-objective standards to see if there's something we can either incorporate in the Development Code as such, or create a new design guidelines document. So, that's, that's kind of the, the near-term, which I think is, we, we have to do what we can to conform to state law as soon as we can. So, we have something to operate with when projects come forward. But my concern, I'm sure most of the people on the commission, if not all of you, is that there's a lot of additional work to be done in the Development Code, not just the conformance with state law. We have discrepancies, omissions, confusion of various things that are called out in one way or another, that we need to address. And I feel that that should be done with the entire Planning Commission. Because I think that's, we're the stakeholders in how we apply that Development Code to projects. And we want to make sure we get that Development Code to, to do the, the job it has to do. And then there's, but there's a second part to that, too. And Kelso was just kind of alluding to that, that there, there are a lot of creative ways out there to change zoning requirements, or, or the way we approach development, that would produce what we would like to see Sonoma to be, especially when we're facing the, all the situation with housing and affordability. And so, there are things that can be done. But I think that's going to have to take more time. But it should be something that we thoroughly discuss at, at a commission level, I think, to, to try to get a, good recommendations to go to the city council. Because we're where the rubber hits the road in terms of how the stuff gets, gets applied. So, I want to make sure that we, as a commission, have an active role in that, and not sit back and wait for a, a smaller group to suggest things that they might want to do for us. I was going to propose that we try to set a date for a special meeting to at least have a, a general discussion, and then head toward some more specific points. But that's all been thrown up in the air now. I would still, I, I think we can, we can all go do our homework in terms of the things that we think are needed, need to be changed in the Development Code to make it more clear, or to make it more inclusive. And then, any ideas that we have on how we might affect zoning to make housing a better opportunity in this town? And I would suggest that, just to keep it clean, that if you can come up back with any of those ideas, that I would offer up our Planning Director as the, the gatherer of all that information. And then, we can use that as a basis to start some of those discussions when we are able to meet on the topic. I think I'm going to leave it at that for this point, and I'm going to open it up to the public, and let our, our public have a chance to speak on whatever she's heard that might tweak your interest. And then, we'll come back for a little bit further discussion.
Mr. Chair, if, before you opened it up, the public hearing, just a couple of things, if I can, just to make it clear. Certainly, those Commissioners that have not been involved with the ad hocks to date can participate with its fellow members to provide input. That's clearly the intent. We just have a logistics issue as, as far as getting bodies together and making those assignments. But in the case of what you just mentioned about trying to get a public, a, a group of the Planning Commission together, clearly, April the 1st is going to be when our consultants have produced another document, and we can certainly distribute that to the Commissioners. But clearly, as Commissioner Barnett said, the, there is a three-color-coded system. And without belaboring that point anymore, clearly, we want to get to the council with something that we can do quicker, rather than later. And I'll give you two examples. Commissioner Barnett's favorite is to reduce the development times as far as 20 days in the newspaper, and, versus 10 days. And I'm being funny there, because it's really one of my little fetishes. But that is something that's a fix that can happen pretty quickly, doesn't take a lot of thought. Whereas, if somebody, and we've had this discussion here before, is, do we even need a DRHPC, Design Review? Should the commission subsume that? We help streamline that way? You have 412 pages of a Development Code. And as, as was mentioned, it's kind of beefy. And so, the goal of SB 2 money through HCD is to try to figure out ways to streamline, but still retain what you want as a community. And so, to that degree, if we can get some short-term, I hate using the word "easy fixes" or "quick fixes", but are there simple things that we can do in that ad hoc towards the April 1st date, to get those things moving on at the council level? And then, are there longer-term things that require discussion, like DRHPC or not? Other kind of things, you know, do they come first, do they come second? Those concurrency questions, something that requires a lot of discussion amongst your commission and with the public, that's going to be a longer fix as far as that whole Development Code goes. And so, that's the kind of thing that we're looking for in that committee.
And one other thing, just as, the, the whole point of, of calling a special meeting, which becomes a, a public meeting, is to give the, the public an opportunity to have a voice. Right now, the, the ad hoc committees are set up such that they are not subject to the Brown Act, they are not subject to, or, they're going to invite public and other, other interested stakeholders in. But it's, it's not quite the same forum as we could have here to discuss the issues we think we need to discuss in a, in a public setting. So, I'm really pushing for that. Anyway, I'm going to open it up to the public now, and let Terry have a chance to speak.
Yes, hi. Good evening, good evening, Chair Felder, Commissioners, staff, and members of the public who may be watching on TV. My name's Terri Shore. I'm the Regional Director for the North Bay for Green Belt Alliance, and I live in Sonoma Valley at 515 Hopkins Street. So, let me start just by pointing out to you that we had a very nice spread in the Sonoma County Gazette this month, which is also online, about the City of Sonoma UGB, a recap from the Planning Commission and City Council meeting that we had, what, six, eight weeks ago. And at that point, it seemed to me that the consensus was pretty straightforward across the board, except for a few minor points on the UGB, which is in this article. Same line, 20 years, 100% affordable housing for the exemptions. And, I mean, yeah, so those are basically the main points. So, I guess I really appreciate the fact that we're moving forward on a ballot measure language to reflect that consensus approach, and that the ad hoc has finally met to kind of move it forward again and get the tweaks. I guess I don't understand why we need to have a, a whole bunch of more meetings, and a whole bunch of more public review on the urban growth boundary, because I think it's pretty much everyone's agreed. I mean, at least at that meeting, it seems like it. So, I'm hoping that we can keep that on track and not make it more complicated. Because the other thing that you're talking about tonight, the general plan and the zoning code, or the zoning code in particular, a lot of the issues that have come up around the UGB really need to be addressed in the zoning code. The things that you mentioned, Chair Felder, like, the housing issue really gets dealt with in the zoning code, not the UGB. We can write the zoning code, so we get a lot more opportunities for affordable housing, higher density, and things like that. So, I would urge you to consider kind of flipping all the public review, and have special meetings, ad hoc public meetings on the zoning code. Get the UGB, as we discussed at, at that last meeting. Get that onto the agenda of the Planning Commission. The people can come in and make comments on it. But if you open it up to a whole bunch of more public workshops, then the same issues that we've already resolved are going to come up again. And I didn't get the sense that there was consensus for any more additional major rewriting of the UGB. So, let's do the zoning code. Of course, that's your discretion. So, we'd like to see the timeline. I knew you said a July timeline. Originally, I think staff had said that we were going to go through the process on the UGB in March and April, get that out of the way. It's true, it's not actually due till July, but to get that done, so you can do the Development Code, so. And with Corona and everything else, things could get delayed. But because it isn't controversial, again, I don't think you need a whole bunch of additional meetings. You just put it up there, you get the comment, you finish it off, you write it, you get it ready. So, just a couple of other quick things. When it comes, okay, so these are not related to the UGB. These are just a couple of related to what was talked about tonight, so. Appreciate all the work on the UGB. When it comes to all the state laws, I mean, we're going to have all these state laws coming left, right, and center all the time. So, I kind of agree with the comments that you need to get going on the zoning code and put together what you really want for the City of Sonoma. If you have to make some changes later, I mean, these bills are going to keep coming for years. So, don't wait till you understand what every single bill is, and you don't know what's getting passed and what isn't. Just go forward. And, oh, the last thing was, so, you may want to pay a bit of attention to a county of Sonoma rezoning proposal that is going to have an EIR scoping soon. And the county has decided, in advance of getting its RENA numbers, that it wants to rezone rural county lands that are not zoned for housing, for housing. And so, they're going to be doing an EIR on that. Our concern is a number of those parcels are within the urban growth boundaries of various cities that have not yet annexed the land, so it's still in the county. I haven't looked at the latest map, but there are some around the City of Sonoma. We feel that undermines the UGBs and the authority of the cities. They're also proposing, you know, out, further out, in other parts of the county, which really undermines all of our efforts to reduce, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, put housing near jobs and transit and school, and not put them way out all over the countryside where people have to drive. Also, we haven't built out our general plans at the city or the county. We're losing population, actually, not gaining it. So, there are a lot of things that need to be considered before we start scattering housing out in the rural areas. So, it may or may not be within the purview of this Planning Commission. But if you are interested, I'm sure the county would be glad to update you on that. Thank you for giving me a little more time. I don't know if you did or not, but appreciate being able to work with everyone.
And thank you for your input, Terry. So, I think we'll close the public hearing then, since there's no other public out there. But I guess I'd like to get at, at least a sense of, of where the commission wants to head. I'll, I'll give you your time in about 30 seconds. Just, just to, so we have kind of a, a path to, to go charging down, and we don't necessarily know how all the bits and pieces are going to fit together. But I, I would like to get, have an idea whether there's consensus of the full commission participating in a lot of this stuff with the Development Code and the zoning and that type of stuff. Larry?
Well, I'll start with that. I am absolutely and 100% supportive of the full commission having as much opportunity as possible to participate. There's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of experience, and it would be, frankly, tragic, as far as I'm concerned, to deprive the city of that opportunity. So, I completely support that idea. With regard to a few other points that I, we don't have to get full clarification tonight, but for our Planning Director, my, I have a question. Even though the Development Code itself has to be quote-unquote "objective", and the criteria apply to projects' objective, the city has nonetheless, over the years, had their design guidelines, which the previous Planning Director described as suggestive. Now, is there any reason why the city cannot continue to provide applicants with suggestive recommendations as to what the vision that we want to... recommendations as to what the vision that we want to fulfill with the city in terms of development is concerned? Is there any reason why that can't continue?
It can continue for sure. It's just that you, in a zoning, Sonoma has done a couple of things. You've got your traditional Euclidean zoning. And what I mean by that is going back to a 1926 US Supreme Court case where you create specific zone districts, where you do specific things in them, and they each have specific setbacks. Sonoma has that, millions of cities in California and the country have that. What Sonoma has that's different is not only do you have a commercial district and residential and a mixed use and the variety of mixed use and open space districts, you've got those all set apart and surround, you know, throughout, spread throughout the city. We also have what's called platting areas, where you've drawn a line around a certain piece of geography, and inside one of those six planning commissioners, planning areas, you have a commercial zone. So you can have a commercial zone in one of the planning areas over here, and you can have it down here and that way. Some of your planning areas may not have any commercial in them. So the planning areas, all six of them, each have their own different zoning districts in them, and so that's what's unique about our code. But guess what? To address your question, we also have design guidelines, if you will, that aren't prescriptive like your Euclidean zones, that have your setbacks, your height, your density, and all those kind of things, and you actually have, well, you should keep with the residential nature of this particular planning area. Some planning areas are more very commercial and mixed use and have no, very little residential in them. So that's what we're trying to do, is figure out what pieces can come out of those planning areas. You still, your zoning districts still stay the same, unless we want to change some of the setbacks and things like that to increase more housing. But what do we do with those particular planning areas? And on top of those planning areas, we also have corridors, like the Broadway Corridor and the West Napa Corridor, and then we have open space districts as well. And we have the Gateway District on the south end of town where most of the focus is on the difference between the city limits and the UGB boundary. But specifically to answer the question, I'm a long way around it, sorry, yes, you can have a separate document altogether that says, these are design guidelines and those are the shoulds. We're trying to take the shoulds out and put numbers to them. Things have to be measurable, is what we're trying to put in the code.
Okay, well, I understand that, and I'm glad to hear that, that at a minimum, we can continue to reinforce a vision linguistically and in subjective language, because this represents, at least insofar as the current general plan, part of the city's aspirations, and hopefully, as it has been in the past, because they have been suggestive, not prescriptive, that applicants coming forward will appreciate the intention and the meaning of these guidelines and come forward with projects that continue to suit those guidelines. I mean, that's a hope. I understand that from a legal standpoint, we can't rely on the guidelines if they're subjective in order to rule on whether or not a project is or is not acceptable. But I still think it's good for us to say to the people, this is what we want, and this is what you should aspire to do.
So there is one thing I want to point out. SB 330 was dealing with residential, not commercial.
Right.
And so the point being is, you can leave all your subjective stuff in about commercial all day long. It's the residential. Now, the question is, what happens if we do zero to our development code? Well, the subjective's still in there. We just can't use that as a basis to judge a project unless it's specific or objective and measurable. The whole point of the legislature is to say to municipalities, make your zoning process less cumbersome, help people get through that process quicker, and let them know what it is you want and what can they expect to see at the end day. Oh, by the way, you can only have five meetings, whatever that means. And oh, by the way, try to figure out ways to streamline so that they can have an expectation of what's going to come out at the other end. Oh, and by the way, let's make things by right to the degree that you can. If I can just address, if I may, Mr. Chair, one of the comments from Teri about the county. Yesterday, we received information that they're going to begin an EIR countywide with respect to their, using their SB 2 money. They're a larger entity than Sonoma. We received 160,000. I think theirs was 380 or something like that. It was up in the 300, high 300 range, I believe. And what they're using that money for, 100% of it for, is to hire people or staff to look at areas around the county where they can kind of come up with housing sites and do rezonings where multifamily is allowed by right without any discretion of the public agency. And they're doing that in anticipation of a factor of two, maybe three, of an increase in their RENA number coming in in about a year from now, that they're going to have. So rather than scramble at that time to figure out how to get densities increased to meet the RENA number, they're doing it now. They've got that, they're going to have a scoping meeting, I think, in the beginning of April, and they're letting public agencies know where it is throughout the county that they're going to be doing that. With respect to the City of Sonoma, they've identified, I think, four parcels or five, I could be wrong, but it's in the south part of the city, outside the city limits, inside the UGB, which is the very places that we should be encouraging annexation. And those properties are on the southeast corner, excuse me, southwest corner of Napa and Broadway, south of the market on that corner there, all the way out to the bottom. I think there's five or six, I believe that's, yeah, so it's on, right. As opposed to, well, yeah, south of that. As opposed to a piece of property that's just been released on the market, which is five acres, that I've met with Mid Penn today about, it's a five acre piece of property, the Seraphini Property, which is on the east side, south of Napa, on the east, excuse me, on the east side of Broadway. As they're interested in that, and I've also had conversations with Burbank about that very same property, they've shifted their focus from the six acre piece of property that was on the south side of Napa that we were talking about at the joint meeting with the Planning Commission and City Council. Their interest in that has somewhat changed a little bit for one reason or another, and I can get into that later if there's interest. But the point being is, there are pressures on the south end of town. We've received an application for annexation from De Nova Homes for a piece of property on Fifth Street East, on the west side of Fifth Street East, on the north side of Napa at the corner there. And that would square out, that is a piece outside the city limits, inside the UGB, so that process will be the precursor to anything else that happens either on the Seraphini property or with these parcels that the county is interested in identifying as part of their vacant sites. The reason I bring that up, and I brought up the SB 904 thing, is there's going to be a move where the City of Sonoma has no input onto how multifamily is going to be built in and around our city. And the question is, do we want that control or not? And so I think there's going to be a public discussion about that, because in the county's communication today, and I'm happy to distribute that if there's interest in the commissioners receiving it, they're clearly wanting to do multifamily up to a certain density without any kind of discretionary review. And I think that's the question we have to ask as to the timing of that, along with any interest there is in the development of the Seraphini or the Doyle property.
Okay, can I, let me just finish my remark and then I'll pass it on. I was just going to say that this goes back to the chair's concern about the commission's role in this, which is that one of the, one of the activities I expected we would get involved in as a planning commission in anticipation of the revision of the general plan of the development code was going to be identifying areas and items that require policy decisions and recommendations that we would then have to make to the city council as pertaining to actual policy changes in these documents, of which I think there are a considerable number. And that's well beyond this issue of subjective and objective. Obviously, the standards that are applied in terms of the actual implementation measures associated with a policy would have to be objective, but there may well be some policy issues. I know there are policy issues that we've identified that should be identified in advance of this whole process, and I'm not sure, you know, where in this process that Commissioner Barnett and the chair are participating in, but I'm hoping this commission as a whole will have an opportunity to look at these policies.
Well, that's exactly, that's exactly what I want us to do as a whole. I don't want to wait for this ad hoc committee, which is much more concerned with satisfying California state law and just getting things cleaned up. I think we have to go much further beyond that, and I want to do that at this level in whatever forum it is required, special meetings or whatever. Steve?
It occurs to me that, given all that we're experiencing and difficulties with meetings, that maybe we want to think about a different format for exchanging ideas about areas where the development code needs work. And I'm thinking maybe there's some sort of a group document that people would add to. We could do this online in some way that where people get a, here's my five suggestions, and other people say, oh, those are great, I got three more. And then we might end, in advance of a meeting, we could come up with a good list of things that gets us a head start on this without ever having to all sit down in the same room. So I'm thinking that that might be worthwhile.
I totally agree with that. It's just that we have to be careful with the logistics of how we contribute to that. But... Yeah, the governor basically has relaxed a lot of the Brown Act stuff. I'll say a lot, but there's going to be Brown Act relaxation, I guess. And I think municipalities are going to have to get creative. He didn't say how things will be done, but clearly that along the lines of what we've just heard, again, there's short term stuff we can do, get out of the way, make it compliant, let's move on, but there's certainly a longer time which will involve discussions. April 1, we're going to get our first document that the ad hoc is going to get a look at, and that doesn't preclude then trying to shape the development code that we want to see as well. Short term, long term?
But I think we should open some kind of a website or a depository where we can put in individual comments and suggestions, and if we could figure out a way to do that in a, you know, in a planning folder on the city website or something like that.
Yeah, there will certainly be a lot of ways that we're going to have to do things differently.
Yes.
I have a question about those properties you were just discussing. So those are all, the properties that county wants to rezone are all within the UGB. The Doyle Property, the Seraphini Property, and I think the Merlot Property across the street, for years have been applying for growth management units that they've been getting. And then once they get half of them, they can apply. Are you saying that process would just be discarded? I mean, it seemed like the city always had input in that process because of the whole GMO.
Right, and there's also the question of the relevancy of the GMO in the first place, because it was originally instituted because of a lack of sewer, well, not a lack, but a concern about sewer and water.
Right.
And so the question is, is that still relevant in the context of what the county can do with or without our blessing? Clearly, they have the ability to do whatever they need in county zoning, irrespective of what the UGB says. They can clearly rezone property without our input. Now, can it be annexed? We can petition for annexation. We have that ability to go to LAFCO to do that. Now, can they develop?
So they wouldn't get water unless they were annexed, right?
Well, that's the trick, is they're obviously not going to want to annex unless they get the water in the sewer for development purposes.
Or they wouldn't develop unless they could get the water in the sewer.
Correct, right.
So that's up to us.
Yes, it is. The city council will determine whether, like the Doyle Property, it will determine whether they want to annex it. And at that point, you go to the, to LAFCO for that opportunity. You'll do a sequel review as well. Right now, what the county's doing is they're doing an EIR for all of these properties. It's a master plan EIR, so they don't have to do one very specifically on each of these properties.
But if we annexed it, it would be in the city, so then we would have input over that.
We would, we would be then in control of how it develops out, yes.
Right, okay.
Mm-hmm. Carrying on with that topic, I would strongly support not losing the opportunity to have input on how our gateway into our community ultimately gets developed. And if that means annexing in land so that we take back a little bit more control and we do it in a way that makes sense, I would strongly support that, because it just goats me that Sacramento is passing all these kind of broad stroke rules and laws that, you know, I'm not saying we are special, not that we're special, special, but this is a community that we fought and hard to keep special, and it seems like with these, these bills are taking a lot away from us, and I don't want us to be just any suburbia USA. I really don't.
Go ahead, Steve.
If I'm understanding this correctly, I'm, this is land that is within the projects you're talking about, in terms of these developers being interested. They'd have to be annexed, they're within the UGB, but they're outside the city limits, therefore they're subject to our existing UGB or the new UGB. They can't come into the city if they don't meet the requirements of the UGB. Is that not right?
Let me be clear about what the UGB says. Beyond the UGB, we have no land use control, okay? We can only control what's inside our city limits, okay? Those are not two of the same things. We have jurisdictional police power in our city limits. How do we control land outside of our limits? We don't. It's the county's purview. We have created a UGB where we've said you cannot do anything outside of the UGB, but at the end of the day, it's the county's land. They get to entitle it. But we have the hook of the water, okay? And that's where they need our ability, our power to service, and that's the rub. What the county's doing right now is they're saying, we've got an RENA number that's going to come and hurt, so let's go ahead and get some numbers and paint it residential so that we can then qualify for high density and get that development credit for RENA. I'd love, as a planner, to be able to call that, those numbers, our numbers, whatever the densities are. In that, let's just talk about Seraphini Property, five acres, or we can talk about, I'll call it the Habitat Property. That was six acres, 20 units to the acre. Do the math, you're north of 100. Look at the Seraphini, five acres, 20 units, and that's without density bonus, another 100 units. How juicy would that be to put that into my RENA numbers? Right now, I can't do that. The county gets to do that. At the end of the day, we want the housing, regardless of who does it.
How tough is it to push?
Can't that be double counted? I'm sorry, I mean, can't the county use it, and then once we get it?
Once we get it, it'll be part of our cycle. You know, it'll be part of that. Our RENA numbers will be amended, so to speak, but they don't, they don't get it, we don't get it at the same time. I mean, that's clearly...
How difficult is it to start annexing some of these properties?
Well, that was clear, well, I think the question's going to come up when Doyle makes its way through, and we're in the process now of determining whether that's a, we're going to be completing an initial study and starting that process for that property. I want to say it's not quite three acres, but it's going to force the question of the planning commission and council. We go for the, we go to the, we do all of the sequel work, which LAFCO will then use that to use as part of their action, but clearly, we'll be going through that action ourselves first. We'll get a resolution of intention to annex from the city council. Your commission will have a bite at it as well.
Can I say one more thing about RENA? Because I know we're talking, it's, when does that come? A year or two from now?
This, this April, I believe, we'll get, the council of governments will get the determination, which is the big number, that it then takes a year to divide out to the nine agencies within the county.
So if I remember correctly, we got a RENA number maybe 10 or 15 years ago that the city pushed back on with the idea that we have no BART, no SMART, no mass transit, a bus that comes once every hour, two lane roads from every direction.
And you have 137 units.
Right, and we have, you know, Forest Fire, I mean, it's not maybe the greatest place to put a ton of housing unless maybe city-centered, et cetera. And so you were saying that we might get a RENA number three times as much as 137?
So, yeah, let me expand on that, because there are some factors, some, again, moving parts. If I can, if it's okay, Mr. Chair. So housing element law in California is such that geographic council of governments all do their process at different times, but clump... all do their process at different times, but clumps of councils of governments do it all at the same time. So right now, jurisdictions in California are currently in their fifth cycle of five years or eight years, whatever you want to call it, because it does change. We're currently in our fifth cycle of an eight-year period, and that expires in 2023. And we're in the process of getting a new cycle of eight years of a RENA number. That's what we're looking for, and that will be called the sixth cycle. Well, guess what? Sacramento, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, received their determination, and then they were divvied out by CECOG to the agencies, 29 of them, and guess what? The cumulative impact was 146% increase over their prior fifth cycle numbers. Southern California, 329%. So I'm thinking a doubling of 137 or a tripling of 137 means that planners here need to go out there and find where we can get those numbers. But guess what makes it more complicated? HCD has a provision now that says, you know that fourth cycle that you had and the fifth cycle that you're going through right now? You've got some vacant lands in those two, and you really haven't done a real good job of developing any of those? We're not going to let you put those in your sixth cycle, guys, because you're not got really any intent of ever develop. They're not reasonably expected to be developed to get the housing that we're trying to get in the first place. You've done a lousy job, you don't get to count them. Well, guess what? There's one exception to that. They will let you put that into your new RENA, your sixth cycle, to count towards the doubling or tripling of the 137. If within, you have a policy in your new housing element that basically says, within the first three years of your cycle, you will rezone those properties that have been unsuccessful in the past to allow high densities by right. That's the only way we'll let you count those that were unsuccessful in the prior two elements. So we've got a task ahead of us, and wouldn't it be nice for me, I said the word juicy, would be to get those houses at Doyle, get those numbers at Seraphini, get those houses at Leveroni, I think you said they were called. I've got to figure out how to get vacant land and/or readapted land to convert to get a higher number of RENA's, to get it zoned.
And we can't push back?
Well, I've pushed back with HCD on one set of numbers that we received, and I think I'd rather have brain surgery. I love HCD, by the way. I have good friends at HCD.
Does anybody else have some thoughts they want to add to this conversation before we call it a night?
Mr. Chair, if I can just say, we are looking at some ways in which to have a repository for documents so the public can send us correspondence, and happy to share the communication with US commissioners if there's an interest in seeing the communication on the rezones that we just received.
If you create that repository for the public, maybe we could also create one for the planning commission to kind of use as their own thinking pot.
Just as a personal experience, I've used a program in the past called GoToMeeting, and I've participated in a group meeting video online with as many as, I think we had as many as 20 people at once, able to turn on their video and their voice. It requires a different set of protocols in terms of the way you conduct the meeting, because you can't have everybody speaking at once. It's one person, one at a time, and you have to have some sort of procedure. But it did work, and it was effective, and I had, this was further complicated in that of the 20 people, they were all over the world, doing this in real time. So there is, and that was a number of years ago, I bet it's gotten even better since then.
But doesn't that tread on Brown Act?
Well, as I said, the governor's relaxing Brown Act as we speak.
I mean, all we have to do is open up each of these sites to the public, and then it's a public meeting, but...
Yeah, well, something that I read today talked about, if you have five council members, they can all be at their homes, and they're going to change the ways that you have to invite or not invite the public into your home, but ostensibly, you could have nobody as an elected official or US commissioners in this room, but there does have to be one place where the public can come and say something on the record. But, and it even goes as far as to say that staff doesn't have to be at the meeting either, physically in place, so Wendy will be happy with that.
All right.
It's a new world, that's all we're saying. And I think you'll hear more about this, because I believe the city manager was going to be issuing a, an emergency declaration, I think, today, somewhat akin to the one that the governor produced today. But I think we'll have more information on Monday night.
I think we'll wrap this up, though, but I would look for input from individual commissioners on any burning issues you think you want us to address, so. And we'll figure a way for you to put that somewhere so the rest of us can all look at Anything else? You got issues update, David?
No, I did that earlier, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Comments from the commission, other than what we've just done?
Is our local state representative a marshmallow? Because why is Weiner pulling so much power in this and creating so much angst? I thought, don't we have a voice? And isn't he speaking, or she?
Senator Doherty.
Okay.
I would be more than happy to do it, and he doesn't have a fire right now to chase after, so he should have some time. I'd be happy to talk to him.
With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.